Without a gavel, I'll just call it to order with planning commissioning, which is going to be planning commission meeting, and we'll start with the roll call.
Thank you.
Chair Lane?
Here.
Commissioner Tonelli?
Here.
Commissioner Sokoloff?
Here.
Commissioner Lerner?
Here.
Commissioner Lamb is excused.
All right, good. All right, so a couple things. Let me comment on this public right now here. There's one item that we're gonna continue. So if you're here to talk on the school master plan, it was mistakenly listed as a sacred heart, but it's not a sacred heart, it's a mental school. So we're gonna we're gonna continue that item. So if you're here to talk on that, you know, we'll reschedule it for next time. You'll have another opportunity to see democracy in action. So if you're here, I'll just let you know. But now let's continue with the public comment section. This is designed to bring up a topic that isn't on the agenda. Sometimes that leads to somebody just put on the agenda later or highlight something in front of the community. So I'll go ahead and open the public for anything that's for an item to be talked about. If it's not on you to, I will hit it in a public comment. And everybody's rushing to the microphone, so I'm gonna close the public comment and bring it back to the to the board. And then we'll start with the public hearing. We start with item four A, which is a special structures permit at ninety seven Michael's Way. The the procedure on this will be this staff gives an overview, and then we'll open it up in public comments, starting with the applicant and anyone else that wants to speak. Then we'll close and bring it back to the board for discussion and action as appropriate. So that's that's the process we use. We'll start with the staff report.
Thank you Chair. Um, just backing up, did you want to move item three?
Oh, oh. Yeah, yeah, three three before four. That's a good idea. Thank you. Good facilitation. All right, so before, all right, is this filled with the approval of the minutes or the discussion minutes? Any?
I just wanna ask for clarification on something I apparently said. Um, on page four, uh, screening requirement can help too many get negative impacts. Uh, that the commission should try to create inequality for all designs. It's at the very bottom of page four.
Yeah.
Um, I I don't know what was meant by equality for all designs. And I I bring it up primarily because, um, five B tonight will be giving direction on landscape screening.
Well, within the context of the discussion, we were talking about the idea that, uh, that that some of the, uh, some of the applicants who previously talked about it actually seem like it was consistent with these with the, uh, modern signs because they the 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 definition of the ceiling versus the wall, that's what that was about. So that was in your context. That's it. You wanna read the word out so it feels more comfortable and out of context.
Mm-hmm.
So more consistency might be a better way to say that? Or make it more emphasis to see?
Yes, I just, um, I just don't know why there would've been a contest at all on design since, you know, you don't review design.
Yeah, looking at the, um, or excuse me, watching the video that we had done at Jennings, I think it was a two topic statement combined into one. One, a comment regarding landscape screening, and two, there was a prior conversation regarding how the way that the sidewall height definition can perhaps create inequitability in the application as it relates to attic spaces for a modern type of architecture versus more, um, traditional type of architecture. So we can clarify the two distinct topics of landscaping and sidewall height definition as it relates to attic space.
That would be great, 'cause I wanna know it. I read the minutes. I understand what I said.
That's so overrated. All right, anything else?
Nothing else from me.
All right, so you want to open the the, uh, method?
I agree that we.
Uh, the.
The minutes as amended.
Yes, minutes as amended as second?
Second.
Move to second. Do all those papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
An abstain.
An abstain, you weren't here. Uh, okay, so take our word for it. Um, so let's go ahead and go with United School of Studio Three already. So go to item four, and I'll open up to you publicly, uh, I'll have the staff report on structure and the special structure permit for ninety seven Michael's Way.
Thank you Chair. The request before you tonight is for a special structures permit for a garage with a reduced front yard setback at ninety seven Michael's Way. The applicant is proposing to locate a garage at the front line of the existing main residence, sixty seven feet from the front property line. The lot is located at the end of a cul-de-sac on Michael's Way. It's considered a flag lot because it does not meet the conventional requirements for lot frontage in the town's municipal code. The lot's fronted, the lot's only frontage is a approximately fifty foot curved portion located along Michael's Way. The garage would be sufficiently screened from the main residence, um, and there's existing landscape screening in place. The applicant would also submit additional landscape screening plan to the satisfaction of our town arborist to ensure that the structure will be minimally visible from neighboring properties in the public right of way. The garage is compatible with existing neighborhood patterns and character, as a similar special structures permit was issued to a neighboring property. The applicant considered locating the structure on other portions of the lot, but due to locations of exist- existing structures, such as an existing garage, flat work, a heritage tree, and a pool, this location makes the most sense in terms of design. No heritage trees are proposed to be removed as a part of this project. Public notices were sent out to all neighbors within a five hundred foot radius of the property, and staff has received no questions or public comments regarding this hearing. The garage would meet all other applicable zoning provisions for an accessory structure in the R one A zone. With all of that said, staff is able to recommend approval for the special structures permit. I'm more than happy to answer any questions, and we have representatives of the project team as well as, um, the residents here.
Okay, great. All right, any questions to staff before we go open a public comment? All right, then I'll go with, thank you. And I'll go ahead then and have one of the public comments. So is there, is the applicant here?
Yes.
All right, well, you you can speak or one of your delegates.
Well, this is the architect who designed the, Chris Comer, who designed the garage and he's happy to speak.
Wanna join in?
Yeah, either way, whatever you want.
My name is Chris Comer and, uh, Keith and for working for Keith and Betsy here. You know, it's a pretty simple project, but I did wanna point out one simple thing about the layout, and that's maybe brought up on the screen here if I.
Computer has died.
Computer died, okay.
But we have a site.
But it's a very simple note that in locating the garage, the special structures permit would allow us to bring it up to the front setback, and that would maximize the usable yard. So that would have been sort of the way to maximize the backyard.
Okay.
But we tried to be sensitive in the design, and we pushed it back from that line to line up with the house. So it's soft looking from the street at a little bit of a detriment to the yard, but I think that was the appropriate move. So we think that'll look nice, and hopefully you do too.
Good. Any questions? We have a smaller version of that. Any questions? All right, we're in the presentation, obviously.
The visuals were fantastic.
All right, any other, any other comments?
The.
Go ahead and introduce yourself for the record.
For the record, I'm Keith Wallenberg, property owner. Uh, the adjacent neighbor has a similar structure with the garage back in the same corner lined with the the front of their house. And he's submitted a a letter to the planning commission. I don't know if you have a copy. If you don't, I'll make sure it gets in the record. But, uh, saying that he has no problems with it, and in fact, you know, the two garages would be facing each other a hundred and twenty seven feet apart, and the existing screening is such that you can't see either one from the other. So there's really not much of an issue as far as he's concerned. The neighbor on the other side is David Wallenberg at eighty five Michael's, and he's here in support of the idea as well.
Good. All right, super. Sounds like you think it is. All right, any other, any questions? All right, anyone else wish to comment? All right, then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for other commission for, uh, discussion and action as appropriate.
I think it was very well presented in our packet with neighbors input. They've all been consulted. And, uh, the architect did a great job of describing everything. There's a number of trees involved, none of which are heritage trees, but the actions that are necessary to preserve them, when the driveway is put in, for example, are well delineated in our packet. And, uh, I I think it answers all my questions.
Yep, I totally agree. Um, until I came up from, um, information that this is a flag lot, I was thinking, well, why would you want the garage to be, they'd be aligned with the front of the house? And then, um, once I looked at the photos and I saw all the, uh, mitigations that you're putting into place to avoid removing heritage trees, I thought this really is almost a perfunctory kind of process for me because, um, it seems that it comes to commission primarily because it's a special structures permit. I mean, no, for no reason other than than that. Is that correct?
That's correct. With for a reduced setback issued through the special structures process.
Yes. Right, right. Yeah, I I think great measures were taken to, um, make sure this was a proceeding proposal, and it seems to me to be.
Yeah, that'll, and I appreciate the, uh, effort to, uh, recite the garage and and the reasons you delineated for the alternate sites, uh, to be, uh, not considered. Uh, that was important for me to see that you had done that and, um, and that there are legitimate reasons for having to put the garage where it is. And, uh, and the flag lot consideration as well, and your efforts to add additional screening. Appreciate the effort that you've gone through to kinda make this work.
And I have visited the site, and, uh, two things, uh, that was pretty clear that it was not gonna be an impact to the to the neighborhood right on that street. And then, uh, the aerial, the aerial shot helped me feel comfortable with the, with the, uh, back the neighbor hide. So both of us are pretty straightforward. It would get with each other. Maybe the control was picked because of the one variance, but it was, uh, seemed like it was pretty straightforward. All right, so, uh, with that, uh, I'll go ahead and ask if there is a motion, uh, on the item.
Yeah, I'll move that the planning commission approved the special structures permit at ninety seventy Michael's Way, based on the findings and for the reasons enumerated in the staff report, and subject to the conditions lifted listed in the draft special structures permit to allow a detached garage to be located at the front yard setback for the main residence.
Is the motion a second?
Second.
Move to second. All those in the papers say aye?
Aye.
Hosts and abstains? Now, so that's it. Thank you very much.
We can make this longer if you want.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, see you then.
Thank you.
And you want this back again? Uh, tickets are very cheap right now. All right, so, uh, uh, we have the item, uh, at five A, and that's, uh, this is gonna have to be continued because it says sacred heart on the, uh, on the on the agenda, but it's really about a mental school. So, uh, we're, we need a motion to continue to the next meeting. Is that correct?
Please. February twenty second.
All right. November what?
February twenty second is the next meeting.
February twenty second. All right, February twenty second. So I need a motion to move the item to February twenty second.
I know that we wish five A to February twenty second meeting.
Right. There's the first, there's the, the motion is second?
Second.
Motion is second? All right, all those papers say aye?
Aye.
Hosts, none, and abstaining. So four O. Then we'll go ahead with the consideration of studying landscape screening ordinance to align with established regulations, item five B, which I thought was an interesting thing. Do you want to give us a staff opinion on it?
So, um, just first by starting, the memorandum that was posted on the website was incorrect. The correct version was emailed to all planning commissioners. There should be a hard copy at each of your dice, as well as there's copies at, um, for the public. So not substantive changes, but there is additional detail in this version. So with that said, um, an overview of what staff is presenting and asking of the commission tonight. Um, a formal letter of request has been received by the town from the property owner at one thirty six Ensonal Avenue, requesting that the town study, um, potential revisions to the municipal code specifically regarding our landscape screening ordinance to add in consideration for the protection of landscape screening and the impacts that it may have on adjacent properties right to access sunlight. Specifically, specific examples given in the letter of request had to do with the inability to plant certain, um, vegetative species and or do gardening as a result of neighbors screening that was required under our landscape screening ordinance that over years grew to a certain height and width that blocked sunlight in specific areas of those neighboring homes. Um, currently, our landscape screening ordinance does not require consideration of a tree's future impact it may have on sunlight access to adjacent properties. What our landscape screening ordinance does now is to provide for the maintenance of an individual property's privacy of homes in the neighborhood to a reasonable degree by requiring certain species types and or quantities that would effectively implement that purpose. Um, and as you've read through the memorandum, the topic of sunlight access is one that, um, this particular property owner feels warrants further evaluation by the town. Um, there were some photographs that were submitted also as part of the request to help illustrate, um, his his request. In conference with the town arborist, this letter of request in front of you, formal letter of request, um, has also been coupled with a few informal verbal, I don't wanna call it complaints, but, uh, the issues brought up has been brought up verbally, but in a more informal basis to our town arborist over the course of a few years. So, um, you know, the example given by our arborist is a redwood tree. A redwood tree can provide very good screening, aesthetic screening between two properties. They also grow quite large, um, quite quickly. So over a few years, you know, what could help be an aesthetic barrier could also effectively create a sunlight barrier as well to that shared property. Um, staff has preliminarily looked into the issue, but bringing it forward to the planning commission for further discussion to see if there is consensus for more detailed evaluation to go in to potentially consider revisions to the ordinance, what that would mean, uh, maybe taking a comparison and see what other jurisdictions are doing. There are other ordinances or other regulations and jurisdictions that have to do with sunlight access, maybe not necessarily as it pertains to landscape screening, um, that I know off the top of my head, but more to do with building mass. So something that we would need to further research in order to come back with more informed information for you if you feel that this topic is is one of further consideration. So do you have Sally here, um, town arborist, to answer any questions you may have on the specific conversations that she may have had with this particular property owner and other property owners who have brought up the issue? Um, and ultimately, what we're asking for is direction if you'd like us as staff to further evaluate the topic.
Go ahead. Um, we are known as a tree city, and trees get very tall. We love our trees. And while I don't doubt that there are certain lots that are affected by a neighbor's trees, or large bushes, or whatever it may be, uh, our lot sizes are rather large, running at least an acre or more. And I myself have eight redwood trees in our front yard, but there's a great clear area for lawn and home, as many others do. So for us to consider restricting the planting of trees seems contrary to what our town is all about.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's prudent when you consider your landscaping as a new homeowner to consider the effect on neighbors. But I suspect it's a minority of cases would be affected by that, uh, decision. So that's my take on it.
I agree with Nancy. I I tend not to like things that limit personal choice. Um, and I'm I'm wondering, Sally, how how often do you see, um, property owners choose redwoods for screening purposes? Specifically for that reason?
I mean, in that couple years I've been here, uh, maybe ten times people have cho- chosen it, so it's not that popular anymore. Um, the people that have complained to me, I'm gonna say complain, um, about not being able to use their pool or garden. Um, they do really, they have larger mature redwoods that have already grown, so we can't really do anything about that at this point anyway. I can, I don't really give recommendations when people put their landscape screening plan to me. Um, I mean, I can, I could bring up the, bring up the idea of, oh, this have you, this could affect your neighbor. Have you considered this? Uh, but I can't really tell them what they can and cannot plant, as long as it screens it within five years.
Yes. Um, it, I think it's difficult to quantify, you know, with with screening and height restrictions or height, uh, parameters, they're they're easy to to kind of, uh, judge and see what's there as far as screening is concerned. Um, when it comes to lot size, I think Ensonal, don't they have smaller lots over on Ensonal?
Some.
Hold it, maybe not. I'm thinking of Ensonal, actually, is what I'm thinking of.
There's some, there's some. There's reporter papers and everything.
Maybe not in Ensonal. But I know it's more of an issue on smaller lots. I mean, um, the south of town, there's some quarter acre to one third lots.
Right. Right.
Um, where the shade is is, uh, more impactful as opposed to the acre lots where you do have some space beyond the the shade of the trees to have a clearing. So I think that is a consideration, but how do you evaluate?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, how do you, how do you quantify this? It it would be my initial question.
Mm-hmm.
As to what space would there be for to get enough sunlight to grow something? And what if that I, well, I wanna grow something over here, and that's getting shaded? I mean, it's just, it's so subjective.
Right.
Really, really difficult to kinda direct.
Yeah, my whole thing is the definition of property, um, and it's more basic than the tree. Okay, so I I'm I'm tipped off because planes fly over my airspace, okay?
Yeah.
I I I I call up and I say, you wanna stop driving, stop flying planes, get my A T M. Uh, so I I have this vision of this place that is, you know, within the realm of my thing. So we, we had a recent, uh, uh, neighbor move in, and and our trees were growing over the lot behind us, and we should be coming back because the last summer liked it, but this one didn't, so that's fine. But on that fence line, I'm thinking, okay, that fence line is the property. Now, if you start, uh, doing, uh, estimates on growth per square foot of a tree over twenty years or whatever, or saying, by the way, uh, so I have one, two, three, four, five, you know, we have like three quarters acre acres as an average acre. Um, but it's, uh, uh, we have like probably twelve trees that are over five stories high around the edge of our property, right?
Mm-hmm.
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 Right, so I could guess, I guess I could go top them all off, you know, if I, if that, but then that that would be the solution. That it could be, be topping trees all over the place. Yeah, so I don't think there's a way to legitimately address this from the standpoint of, uh, regulation. Um, you know, if if the, if the, you know, I I can see that there's a, if there's an issue about it just, I don't know, if it's ratty or whatever, or it looks like a, you know, it's a danger to the to the community, or it's, it's a redwood that's twenty feet tall or seventy feet tall, it's gonna fall on people or something like that. From a secure, from a safety standpoint, I could see this addressing it. From a safety standpoint, from the standpoint of how close is it to is it to a gas line? Or how close is it to a water line? I had to remove a tree because it was sitting on top of a water line, uh, and a gas line. Uh, so I've, I've seen, I've I've seen situations where for safety purposes you can do it, but within a person's property, you know, what you're saying is basically my property line extends to where your shadow might go.
Right.
And I just don't see, one, I don't see a way to to make that valid.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, because all of a sudden we were talking about one story becoming a two story because it gets knocked down, and then the shadows, you know, go, and if you take the loss around here, what do you do with the loss around here? So I I'm, uh, you know, if the staff came up with something that said there was something growing on this, uh, like because everybody's based solar energy and that's a, that's a factor, then there might be an element of it that is related to ob- obstructing solar, you know, generation or something like that. But, uh, I I'm not, I I'm not seeing a a basis for this that we could give instructions to staff how to do it.
Mm-hmm.
And then also, could be lots, uh, people lots around here, we have this neighbor, okay, we can, we can go to the eight feet, and then in a, in a five acre lot, you can have whatever you want, so. And then what percent of shade are we talking about?
Exactly.
Right.
You know, it's like, okay, so I've got five feet under your property, is that too much? Or fifty feet in your property? So I, I'm not seeing a, I'm not seeing an actionable lead, an lead to follow up on this.
And you may not have shade all year round, depending on the species and, you know, where they're, so.
Right. I know. Well, that's the other thing, are, you know, during the winter, you you complain about the sun, and then somebody's getting much more shade.
Right. Right.
All right, so anything, any, any con, any, uh, uh, input on this that would make it easier for staff to deal with this issue when it comes to you?
Should we make a motion that they not pursue further investigation of that?
Well, let's, 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 is there a? Well, maybe, but I wanna get their their feedback on, are are you looking for some way to address this issue that comes to you regularly enough to deal with it?
Sally, you wanna give, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't seem as if this issue is getting, um, presented to staff on a frequent enough basis that staff would be recommending further evaluation of it? There is a formal request in front of us, so we do want to look at that.
All right. Yeah, and I I think this is why the good neighbor thing come into light, so when our good neighbor came in,
Mm-hmm, yeah.
we trimmed the trees back, and then the old neighbor was there that they, we didn't have to, and we just went in and trimmed it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So we worked better on.
Always the best way to solve.
Yeah, so, um.
And I think on the, on the occasions I do have had comments, I've told them to write a letter or talk to city council or the planning commission, and and so we've only received one letter in all that time, so.
Yeah. Well, I think, I I think there's a legitimate element of it that has to do with a new, uh, a new property.
Mm-hmm.
So in this one, in this one picture, will be a lot of those trees will be along the tree. And I actually went, when I went there, I went, that's a lot of trees, and they're gonna get all digged and dense, and they're gonna be tall. So that could be something for us to consider in terms of recommendation we make for new developments, right? So I can see a new development not not being, you know, not being necessarily reinforced to have this sort of.
But those are Italian signs. They're just big skinny things. They're not gonna create a wall, are they?
Right, I guess they get big and fat, you know, I've seen around pools.
I don't think so. When I see them, they're just.
Really?
I think they'd be tall enough to actually.
Oh, they're like this.
Yeah, too.
I think, I think they'd get like this.
Yeah, but how much, that's just a big tall skinny thing. It's like a telephone pole.
Yeah, but it's, it gets like ten feet wide. They get, they get wide. Yeah, they get that tall. They get more than one.
Well, this doesn't.
Yeah, but I mean, that's a big building.
Also, a lot of Monterey pines have been planted as perimeter, around perimeters of properties, and those are all dying out. So, uh, it will create less shade, so that's good.
Yeah.
Probably, I mean, that's, um, well, so if if there's something for us to consider in terms of the recommendations on it, you know, I can see it being something that we help and there were, right? But I don't see anything in terms of requiring a change to this, to the code.
No, I don't either.
All right, so do you need a motion or what do you need on this?
Um, direction would be good if you'd like further evaluation, or it sounds like I'm hearing not, so that we can report such to city manager's office who can.
Right.
Can report back.
We discussed it pretty thoroughly and expressed our opinion each of us, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I think at this point, what we're saying is there's, yeah, the combination of, uh, we don't think, we don't think it's an issue
Surprise that.
Yep.
that needs to be addressed with our C- city code at this time. Um, and, uh, we'll, we'll continue to monitor it across the community to see if it becomes an issue for whatever. But definitely, we wanna like always consider a change, uh, or or addressing anything that was safety related or, uh, or, uh, consider this, uh, as a something to think about in terms of recommendations to new developments.
Great.
All right, good. Yeah, all right. Okay?
Good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so, uh, with that, uh, we have the initial reports. Anything, uh, happened in the, in the neighborhood the last month ago?
Well, civic center, um, advisory committee, we probably have a month or two left, uh, with our duties before the, uh, the council, um, takes everything and decides whether to approve or not approve. In our last meeting, we kinda went over revising the landscape plan, um, and, uh, considered some signage. Um, we considered, uh, the entryway to the, uh, library here, uh, fountain at the library deck. We just, there's a lot of detailing things that we went over with the landscape plan that we just kinda tweaked. And, uh, before we send it off to the council, we have a special meeting that's coming up, uh, Wednesday, in advance of our regular meeting, which is the following Monday. And Wednesday, we're, I just got this email this afternoon, we're scheduled to be doing, um, going over a, uh, a history of the, of the project and looking at some financing options. 'Cause I think council just voted, uh, elected not to pursue measure L, which was a smart move in my opinion. Um, so now they're looking at the the different financing options outside of, uh, the donations that have been coming with average to now, so. Uh, but our duties as the advisory committee are coming to a close within the next couple of months. I don't know, I have some pictures of some of the last year if you guys would like to see any of them. Uh, we have one of our signage, too. Uh, this first one, there's a sign in front of the Fairbrokes, uh, Uh, we have one of our signage too, uh, this first one, there's a sign in front of the Fair Oaks, uh, front of the building on Fair Oaks, it's kind of a low level, stucco or, uh, wall with, uh, tall trees. Yeah, tall trees, a lot of shade, won't build a growing thing. Um, a- as opposed to say a more, uh, kind of rural looking wooden sign. Uh, we were looking at the wooden signs to to kinda keep in with, uh.
Yeah, that's very nice.
Um, and we talked about the front of the library, you see, the, the building we're in here off to the right, which we'll call the historical town center, uh, the fountain and then the new entrance to the library on the left. And what else would happen?
Did you write a check for the, you know, the town, though?
Yeah, exactly. And, uh, there'd be redoing, reading park back here and kind of some more California native, uh, type of, uh, planting and some pathways. That whole area just needs to be completely activated, and the redwoods make it difficult in light of what we just talked about with the shade. So we have to kinda think outside of the box, what grows well in shade, pathways, things like that, so, uh, that was the thing we did most recently was all the landscape details and, uh, moving on from there.
Good. Alright, that's it. Alright, and then when you're, and when you're done with this cycle, does it act, did it, oh, then just go to the fundraising after that, or?
Uh, well, the fundraiser's been going on, um, and that will continue, but our duties just as the advisory committee, that'll will be, that'll be it, I believe. I mean, I I would imagine we'll still be around in case they they need us, but, uh, it moves on with the council from there. Uh, W R N S, the architect, has also been, um, retained, redesigned in court regard as well, so that has not been part of the project up to this point.
Okay, go ahead, anything else on that, uh, any other question or report?
That's it.
Tree committee work is coming along beautifully, I think.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, good.
Uh.
Well, are we almost done with it?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, yeah, sorry, yes.
So our next meeting, we'll jump into seven here, for the tree committee, which is Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Sokolov, and two members of the, um, tree committee themselves, and Sally, of course, um, will be presenting a completely clean revised version of the tree preservation and specification guideline document. There'll probably be some changes to the actual municipal code ordinances, just so that things are internally consistent. So to answer your question, I would imagine one to two more meetings after our February meeting.
Yeah. Okay.
Think we've made good progress on it.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, the meetings have been quite productive, very.
Yeah.
Alright, good, super, alright, can I have all of it?
Oh, yeah, I, no, it's awesome, I love it.
Good, good.
Should have more of those meetings.
Good, cool, alright, any other, any other reports?
Nope.
Any other staff elements?
No.
Alright, so now we're down to number eight, which is, you know, is it, there's only four of us, well, there's only four of us here, so we'll put together two two tie.
Is that your favorite one? Oh, wow.
So, I need it.
I love this.
I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
You have a motion?
Seconded.
Seconded, all those papers say aye?
Aye.
I I almost attempted to say that I'll say.
It was all we need.
Alright, so we're adjourned, thank you.
Yeah, we'll see.
What's your case there?